The 3:30 p.m. meeting of the Bakersfield City Council is now in session.
Good afternoon. It's my pleasure to call to order the 3:30 p.m. City Council meeting of July 15, 2020. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Parlier.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Weir. Councilmember Smith.
I am here.
And Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Thank you. On March 4th, the Governor declared a state of emergency in California due to the threat of COVID-19. The Governor also passed several executive orders, including the suspension of some components of the Brown Act related to public meetings such as this. And as such, Councilmembers Freeman, Smith, and we believe Weir are participating by phone, and council votes tonight will be conducted by roll call. Due to the Governor's executive order which waived the Brown Act provisions requiring physical presence of the public in light of the COVID-19 pandemic, public comments have been encouraged to be made by email and phone to the city clerk. Those received in such manner have been provided to the council. We'll receive public comments on the workshop items after the staff presentation on each item. Is there anyone else here who would like to make a public statement on a non-workshop matter? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Mayor Go, I'd like to announce that at the request of staff, the parks update will be heard at the end of the workshop's item. First workshop item is the update on South Mill Creek master plan.
Thank you. Ms. Kitchen?
Good afternoon, Councilmembers and Honorable Mayor. I'm here tonight or this afternoon to give you an update on the PQ property. You might remember this property. It is a city-owned property about five acres located on California Avenue near the Maya Cinemas and the city's aquatic center and ICE Center. In the past, the city council has considered numerous requests and proposals to develop this site, and there's also a master plan that provides an overview for how the site should be developed. And I'll provide a quick history of that for you now. All right, so back in the early 2000s, there were a number of community outreach and downtown design surets that resulted in the Vision Plan 2020. There were numerous initiatives that were put forward through this community effort. One of them was an idea to reimagine the use of the Kern Island Canal. This is a 20-mile-long canal that's owned by the Kern Delta, and at that time, it ran through the downtown area and was a dirt-lined canal surrounded by a chain-link fences on both sides. And while it was functional, it didn't really offer much of an amenity for the downtown area. As a part of the visioning process, the Mill Creek Vision Plan was developed. This plan reimagined the canal and came up with several goals, one of which was to rehabilitate the Central Park area, the canal itself, and the Q Street area, and then to create housing and entertainment uses along this newly envisioned walking path and kind of urban trail that would connect the northern and southern portions of downtown. All of these efforts were supported by investments from state redevelopment funds and economic development funds. As a part of that effort, a linear park master plan was developed. The first phase was north of Central Park near Golden State and included the development of several housing projects which are now built today. The next phase was the renovation of the Central Park area, which eventually led to the construction of the federal courthouse that stands there today. The third phase was the continuation of that renovation of the creek so that it ultimately connected all the way down to California Avenue. At the end of that trail is a final piece, that's the PQ property that we're talking about today, and it was envisioned that that piece would be developed with entertainment uses, again, that are complementary with the Maya Cinemas, the city amenities, and the hotel uses, the convention center, the arena, et cetera. So this is just a few photographs to remind you of what the area looked like before the renovations. Substantial work within to create that urban trail, which has become one of the most unique and well-appreciated amenities in Bakersfield, offers actual opportunity to walk along a riverfront in our downtown area. In addition to that, several housing projects were actually completed in construction or constructed along the corridor totaling up to or close to about 500 units of affordable housing, some of which is designated for seniors, homeless veterans, and more. So now we still have the remaining finishing piece, kind of the diamond of the project, I would say, which is that PQ property. In order to help guide and facilitate development of that property, the city council hired Gensler in 2014 to do a master plan. You've seen this before in a few other presentations, but it essentially shows development of that piece with entertainment uses such as bowling, retail, and restaurants. And this is how it could look over time. And of course, this master plan truly envisioned really using that riverfront property for outdoor dining and those kinds of uses. Since that time, your councils heard several proposals to develop the property. In 2015, we had a request to put an office building on the property. However, the council ultimately denied that proposal because it did not fit with that entertainment vision. Then in 2018, Discovery Entertainment Group came before your council and offered to purchase the property and develop an entertainment venue. Unfortunately, they later rescinded their proposal due to changes in their growth pattern. Since that time, we've had other interests for small type developments such as gas stations, hotels, small retail stores. However, the vision remains. Now, fast forward to 2020. We know that we've all been seeing changes in retail, restaurants, and dining, both before COVID and after COVID. Prior to COVID, we've seen major increases in the use of online purchasing for retail and less of an interest for in-house major big-box type retail development. We've also seen changes in our local population growth and business needs. And then with COVID-19, we've also seen a reduction in in-person shopping experiences, and we're trying to figure out how we navigate this new normal. In addition to that, and prior to COVID-19, there was some good news. We have seen kind of the pendulum start to swing back the other way in terms of retail. A lot of the community is seeing a few drawbacks in online shopping and wanting to have that in-person experience. In addition to that, we were approached by Maya Cinemas late last year with a request to look into this property further. And in fact, they asked that we update that master plan in order to account for the new normal and some of the things that we're now seeing in 2020. And Christopher Boyle, our Development Services Director, is going to walk you through the updated process that we went through to update the master plan.
Thank you, Jackie. Councilmembers, that was a succinct update or a history of the site. I'm here to take it off from March 2020. In March 2020, the city went back to Gensler and asked them if they could prepare an update to the master plan. Thinking back to the 2014 plan, which was really a feasibility study, the idea was to really develop a concept plan that provided for various options, and Gensler did a great job in preparing that for us. Within that update, Gensler also updated a lot of the data sets that were specific to the 2014 plan because times had changed even prior to COVID, and this is happening. We met first with them, signed contract on March 12th, which was just before. So within the updated plan, we have updates to the demographics, the real estate data, circulation and transit components. There's a look at zoning and land use. A new SWAT, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats study was done. We looked hard at parking, and I would note that each of the options we'll look at today are parked onsite consistent with the city standards for downtown. And we also looked at pedestrian connectivity and pedestrian safety. And the ideas that those were really foundational elements in what really is an exercise in place making. So the Gensler plan, the main component of that is four options. But as noted earlier, there's a vision that the city wishes to entertain in the creation of an entertainment district here in the downtown area. And the plan itself shares an interesting vision statement at the beginning of it, and that statement is this: "The new mixed-use South Mill Creek development sits at the crossroads of a revitalized downtown with community facilities, regional entertainment destinations, residential neighborhoods, and the South Mill Creek Linear Park. The project will weave together diverse programs and bring a vibrant, walkable destination to Bakersfield's entertainment district for locals and visitors alike." So let's look at the options that Gensler prepared for us in conjunction with the Development Services Department that look to realize that vision. The first option is called an entertainment and event hub, and the graphics here give you some ideas of the types of things that might be found within an entertainment and event hub, whether that's an entertainment site, a flexible entertainment site, or retail and food and beverage to capitalize on these event venues. And the conceptual plan that was prepared was for a 10,000-square-foot event center, 4,000-square-foot nightclub, some pop-up retail, a food hall, and additional food and beverage opportunities. At the bottom of the slide is an asterisk, and each of these options will have an asterisk at the bottom because there are some prevailing themes that run throughout each of the options that are important overall amenities to the site itself. In this case, in all cases, there is a focus on dining and shopping along the river. The river or the Mill Creek being an amenity to the site, that there was importance to provide a sense of place there with potentials for outdoor dining or places of repose that people could gather. The second option is called Destination South Mill Creek. It's a stay-and-play type of option where a primary component within this option is a hotel where individuals might spend the night and enjoy the various other venues that are available, both here and in proximity to the project site. In this case, there's a hotel that includes an event space as well as an entertainment club and the pop-up retail, food hall, and food and beverage components. Note, too, here we also have this focus on providing frontages to the Mill Creek site and the amenity that brings to the site, that unique amenity. There's also the potential for street closure for special outdoor events. Each of the sites provide for the opportunity to close off sections of the area for outdoor events. That might be a Christmas crafts fair in the fall, or an auto show in the spring, or a farmer's market, or any one of a number of types of outdoor activities that bring additional energy onto the site so that it really becomes a destination-type of venue. The third option is a creative urban village option, and in this case, the primary component within this option is a live-work type of component, which provides for artist studios with loft living above, things along those lines. In this case, that's the primary component, live-work townhomes, but there still is a 5,600-square-foot entertainment club and some retail and food and beverage. The prevailing theme that I wanted to focus on in this particular slide is that there's a continual focus on the 13th Street corridor as an important view shed that provides linkages to the entertainment uses that are already pre-existing on the west side of P Street along the 13th Street corridor with the Maya Cinema at the end of 13, providing an anchor there. So the effort there is to provide for continuity, not just from a view perspective, but also from a pedestrian connectivity perspective to allow for the site to really be viewed as one encompassing entertainment district. The last option that was prepared as a component of the master plan document is a hybrid live and play component. Staff felt it important to include a residential option here, and in this case, we have a multifamily component that is the yellow structure here on the bottom. But nonetheless, there still is the entertainment component, retail and food and beverage component. Maybe the unique component here is the configured parking off-site. You might note that in each case, the city parking lot to the north of the site is a potential for overflow parking onto the site, and it might be important, especially when special events are occurring on the property. And so, we proposed a layout of that parking which provide for a singular point in and a singular point out so that it provided cleaner circulation into and off of that parking lot, and it might help during these high-traffic periods where you could have parking attendants who could keep track of available stalls and feed people into and off of that site to maximize the utility of that parking area. Another component here is the large outdoor event square that was proposed. That's different than any of the other venues, and it kind of takes the gloves off in terms of potential outdoor events that might be optimally placed on this site over the course of the year, especially during our non-hot period, whether that's fall, winter, or early spring, wherein it brings a whole nother opportunity that's not necessarily available in the other three plans. Cumulatively, the four plans provide for a wide range of potential improvements on the site. They're not necessarily intended for each plan to be very rigid in how they're applied onto the site. What they are is options that a developer could use as a base map, as a foundation for the overall development of the site, incorporating the various elements of one or more of the options to ultimately complete the city's vision for an entertainment district in the downtown area. That completes my component of the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boyle. Thank you. Ms. Kitchen, do you have further comments?
Just a couple more. I'll wrap it up quickly. There we are. All right, so on to kind of the last part of our presentation today, the introduction of our buyer. So as I mentioned, Maya Cinemas approached us late last year with an interest in developing the PQ property. As you might recall, Maya Cinemas is owned by Montezuma Esparza, and several of his representatives are here this afternoon if you have any questions for them. But Montezuma developed the Maya Theater in 2007. He was an early believer in your council's vision and got on board and was a partner in developing this theater in the area and has since developed some other retail that's adjacent. Maya Cinemas has a mission to develop, build, own, and operate modern, first-run megaplex theaters in underserved, family-oriented, Latino-dominated communities. In addition to that, in January of last year, Maya Cinemas North Las Vegas opened its doors with a brand-new entertainment-type concept that happens to be very similar to what the council's vision is for PQ. So when they came forward and expressed an interest in purchasing the property here -- thank you, Julie -- we, of course, were very interested in speaking with them, and they were the ones that asked us to update that Gensler plan. They've looked at the four vision options and agree with them and are willing to move forward in developing them. So part of the action that we're presenting to council tonight is approval of that vision plan and then approval of a letter of intent with Maya Cinemas to purchase the site and develop it consistent with that plan. Like other letters of intent that you've seen before, this one has very specific metrics in it, and I'll highlight them quickly here. One, that the property be purchased from the city at fair market value. Two, that the development include the experiential retail, restaurant, hospitality, and mixed uses that are consistent with our vision plan. Three, that the project will complement the existing entertainment venues and really utilize that South Mill Creek riverfront, waterfront area. Four, that prior to close of escrow and transfer of the deed, the buyer commits to certain metrics to show that they're moving and progressing in the development. And then if that actual development does not occur, the city will have first right to purchase the property back in two years. Those are all outlined in the letter of intent that's included in your council packet this afternoon. And so, just to conclude, the recommended action is, one, a resolution approving the updated South Mill Creek master plan with all four options, and, two, approval of the letter of intent for Maya Cinemas to purchase the property. With that, that concludes our presentation, and again, representatives from Maya are here today if you have any questions for them. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kitchen. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments?
Mayor, I'd like to announce that we have received a staff memorandum regarding this item, providing clarification regarding the ownership of the Maya Cinemas and retail spaces. We have one public speaker card that was received from Joanna Coronado.
Thank you. Ms. Coronado, welcome, and go ahead and speak. Joanna Coronado. Mr. Hightower?
Good afternoon, Mayor, councilmembers. Because of my mask, you can't tell I'm not Joanna. Joanna does work with me, and I wasn't sure that I'd be able to make it over. So I want to speak in her place.
Okay, you're speaking in her place. Go ahead.
And we did make copies, and I'd like to present these to the city clerk. The comments, as many of you know, that we support economic development downtown. So in general, we're interested in developments such as that. The comments are really about the letter of intent, and under, you know, under Section 7, which listed some where the city has agreed to support the developer raising funds under the RRIF program. And that program is really to sponsor railroad-related projects. And so, I don't see the link. We've reviewed the master plan. However, there is one under that funding project, a program. They can fund transit-oriented developments, but I haven't seen this project identified as transit-oriented development. And so, I think that it may be considered a TOD because of its proximity to the passenger rail station on Truckston. And so, that we definitely would support because that station is also multimodal with regional and local bus service, and it would make the project eligible for these funding if it was identified as a TOD. The second point was under Item Section 20, under the High-Speed Rail Advisory. In the document, the way it reads now is, it says, "The High-Speed Rail Authority," and I'm quoting, "once considered a route that potentially affected the property and has approved an alternative route." However, the High-Speed Rail Authority has approved that route known as the hybrid alignment, and it could potentially affect the project, the property. However, looking at the alignment and the outlined footprint of the project, we see very minimal impact if any of that alignment should be built. And so, I think just to clarify that section, I think would be helpful for the developer, and we would still support the project as a transit-oriented development because that would make another link to the funding source. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hightower. Madam Clerk, anyone else? Thank you. And then we have our council. Councilmember Smith would like to speak.
On the different designs, a question first. Is this two separate motions, or are we supposed to cover both things in one motion?
There are two separate motions.
Okay, thank you. I like the outdoor dining focus, Options 1 and 2. I think that's important. That's a whole idea of the Mill Creek design. Entertainment retail with all the changes that we have had is the surviving retail and will continue to be the surviving retail, and people, you know, once we get past COVID, obviously want to socialize and be out, and I think entertainment retail has a big future still. The pop-up retail, the food hall, it seems to me that, and you know, whoever designs it will decide, but that those items work together in the same building well, so you create more energy in one place. The idea of the adjacent parking being used and having outdoor events was shown in, I think, the fourth option, and I think that could be used in all the options, and I think the statement was made, you could mix and match. The question that I have is, you know, why we would want residential there. We have substantial residential to the east of Mill Creek, and there's still some empty residential lots there. And I would prefer that, my personal opinion is that, we continue to focus on the entertainment retail without any residential. So I guess I'll go ahead and make the motion for the item on the master plan and just adopt Plans 1 and 2 and not 3 and 4, and those could be mix and match, but to stick with the vision of previous councils and what we've had as continuation of the convention center, the swim center, and the ICE, and the Maya Cinema complex as entertainment and keep the housing on the east side of Mill Creek. And so, I would make the motion to approve 1 and 2 options, but not 3 and 4. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Gonzalez, and then Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to echo the points that Councilmember Smith made. You know, past councils have articulated a vision for this particular property and have remained true to it over the years. Since I've been on the council over the last three and a half years, we've spoken with many developers about this particular site, and I worked very hard to try to see that vision fulfilled. And so, I'm very appreciative that MNE Development has come forward and looks like there's an opportunity here. So I would echo the points that Councilmember Smith has made, and I support the motion to limit options to Option 1, the entertainment and event hub, and Option 2, the destination stay-and-play option. I think this best reflects the vision of the council and my hopes for this particular area, and I know the hopes of many community members. Could be a great opportunity, and look forward to seeing this develop. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. Councilmember Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. I had two points. The first was, as part of our process in, if we end up negotiating a letter of intent, I would like Mr. Hightower's comment about funding. If I understood, this is the only source of funding available, and if it's tied to intermodal or transit-oriented, and if that specialized funding, you know, source isn't available, does that mean this project doesn't go? So I'd like that to get clarified in the negotiation process before we go too far down the road. Second, on the one hand, just glancing at the site, just as a developer, not so much as what's consistent with prior council visions, the residential at the bottom for me just made, seems like it might not be feasible. I could be wrong, but I really, you know, I would like, I'd like this potential developer to have some opportunity to come back and present their case on, well, why do they think that's viable? It doesn't really fit to me into a clouded entertainment. I mean, I've done a lot of projects like this, and even with apartments, you do get, you And even with apartments, you do get, you do get problems with all sorts of noise. So it just seems like that that may not fit anyway. But I don't want to, I don't want to preempt creativity and developers' thoughts because the council really doesn't know what should go there. You know, the city councils aren't developers and don't really read the markets. And so, I don't want to stick to, you know, a fixed vision from years ago that chunks something out that just, you know, it hasn't been developed, which tells us there might have been something wrong with a kind of a bureaucratic vision. So I want some flexibility with the market is how we go forward. And I'd rather have a developer convince us why they have a good concept than to say, "We know exactly what uses go in there." I wasn't sure what Councilman Smith's motion was, was maybe because I don't, I'm looking at the TV here, that we have parts one and two that are old, but parts three and four are what staff is saying in an updated vision. And we're fixated on those that we have to vote to change each block. I'm really not clear on what we were voting on or how rigid the master plan is. So I need someone to help me understand when we approve an update of a master plan, are these chunks fixed in concrete? And you have to come back to the council each time if you want to modify to the market? So I need some help with that.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Ms. Kitchen, would you please offer some clarifying comments?
Absolutely. Councilmember Freeman, to your last question, the four options that are on your screen are all new. Options one or two are similar to the existing master plan in that they focus on entertainment uses. Options three and four are also new, but they add that residential component. And the reason that Gensler and staff suggested this be one of the options for the future is if a future developer acquires the property after Maya, if Maya changes their mind, which I don't think they will, but if they do, this is just to provide options for a future purchaser. And it also aligns with the council's goal to have 10,000 residential units within the downtown area by 2030. But given all of that and given the statements I'm hearing today, one suggestion might be to move forward with options one and two as Councilmember Smith suggested or made a motion for, or to move forward with options one, two, and four. Option four does include a heavy retail restaurant component and then a little bit of residential as well. Either way is fine. And again, the idea here is just to provide ultimate flexibility and be business-friendly while still facilitating development of the council's vision. To the second point related to funding, the railroad grant is referenced in the letter of intent at the request of Maya Cinemas. And that is one of the portions of funding that they're seeking. It's not the only source of funding. And we do have other language in there that says that if that funding is not achieved, they'll provide alternative sources. It's just something, a statement that the city would be supportive of that type of use and that each of these options is consistent with transit-oriented development.
Okay, could I interject? So is option two really more what the Maya company is proposing?
I do believe that was their preferred. I'm looking at Dawn. Oh, option one is their preferred.
Okay, one or two, but they're not proposing three or four anyway?
They are not.
Okay, well, then I'm more comfortable with Councilman Smith's motion. If the current developer looking at it isn't asking to put residential in there anyway, then I'm comfortable with his motion of one and two.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Anything else?
No.
Thank you. Anything further, Ms. Kitchen? Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I was just going to clarify. I think it was clarified that what my motion was, was, yes, just to work with one and two. And I would say, no, the, those exact site plans are not fit in stone. I think, like what was stated is, you know, we want to work with the opportunities for dining and activity along the creek that we built and also the connectivity to the existing facilities, which I think all the options show, you know, pedestrian, crosswalks, and access to the properties to the west. But yes, I don't think that three and four fit at this time. And I would just respond to the one comment that, you know, developer knows what the market is. Well, we had a developer that wanted to do just office, and that was what his market was. But it definitely did not tie to the vision and did not create the energy and the future for Bakersfield that we wanted. So I just wanted to explain that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. I don't see any other requests from our colleagues for speaking. And so, we have a motion. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Parlier? Councilmember Rivera? Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Weir?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman?
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan? Motion is approved with Councilmember Rivera and Councilmember Sullivan absent.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And so now, do we have a motion for the letter of intent? Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. I make a motion to approve the letter of intent.
Councilmembers, are there any comments? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Parlier?
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera? Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Weir?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman?
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan? Motion is approved with Councilmembers Rivera and Sullivan absent.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
This would be item C, listed on the agenda. City efforts to address homelessness. Update on construction progress at the New Brundage Lane Navigation Center.
Thank you, Ms. Kitchen.
Good afternoon, councilmembers and Audible Mayor. I'm back. Hold on for just a moment while the Madam City Clerk brings up our presentation. Okay, so this afternoon, I'm going to give you an update on our progress for development of the Brundage Lane Navigation Center. As many of you recall, this development stemmed from a council action back in January of this year. Just one moment. There we go. The admin report in your packets this afternoon has quite a few details in it about the progress that's been made since the council action to purchase the Calcott property in January. And I'll quickly run through those for you today. Progress can be basically developed into four, or broken down into four parts, including that winter action by your council to purchase, ensuring escrow and community updates, then some of the repairs and design work that were done in the spring, work that we're doing now on construction in the summer, and then, of course, our upcoming grand opening in the fall. And then I'll give you a quick virtual tour of the site. So starting, so, once the council approved the action to purchase the site in January, the city staff quickly developed a fully dedicated website. It can be found at www.bakersfieldcity.us/shelter. And this website has FAQ, information, diagrams, site plans, and all kinds of material about the progress that's occurring at the shelter. And I recommend you check it out if you haven't had the opportunity to do so yet. In April, we also launched our first quarterly newsletter. We've had two of those come out so far. This also includes updates and information about the shelter. Those are available through our social media and on the website as well. During our escrow period with Calcott, we also worked together with them to do several repairs. Though we didn't quite have full access and ownership of the site, we were able to start on roofing upgrades, new paint for the entire building. And I have to say, that was quite the project, as it is a 70,000-square-foot building that hadn't been painted in about 20 years. So that was a big feat to get that done. We were also able to start work on HVAC upgrades. And then we were also able to dive deep into the design. You might remember this site plan from January when your council took action to purchase the site. This was the rough draft that staff had come up with to figure out how we would convert an office and warehouse facility into a homeless navigation center. Since that time, we hired a professional architect who helped us with space planning. And basically, you see that the site is divided into a couple of parts. The tan area at the bottom is what I call the service provider space. That is the office structure where all of our service provider partners will be providing their services. This includes current medical, current behavioral health, current health systems and others. And then the pink area is kind of the living space. This is where we will have our coordinated entry, a day patio, and a commercial kitchen. The yellow areas are our living space. This is where the dormitories and updated kitchen and shower facilities will be. And the green areas are the possession storage spaces. This is how the site plan looks as of today. Once we had the layout finalized with the architect, our teams went to work in creating actual CAD drawings. This is showing where the actual walls need to be removed, where walls need to be added, different doorways, panels, all of the technical detail that Nick Fidler and his staff have been leading the effort on. And I have to say, we've gone through probably 70 different iterations of the design as we work through all the details and learn about the character of our building that we've purchased. In addition to that, and in the midst of all this work, of course, the COVID-19 pandemic impacted the city and the whole country. So we had to make adjustments to the layout to accommodate for that new reality. We expanded the dorm rooms. We added partitions between beds and social distancing between the beds. We added a separate respite and isolation dorm area. We decided to remove the existing flooring in much of the facility and replace it with polished concrete floors. This is important and was a big decision because much of the flooring was much older tile and vinyl that had been in place since the '70s, or carpeting, very difficult to clean, especially in light of COVID. We also added other no-touch features, food warmers in the kitchen, and are reworking that design to make sure that we can provide individual meals to allow for safety and sanitation. This summer, we were able to get the keys when we closed escrow with Calcott. We were then able to launch into several construction agreements. So this really is a private-public partnership. Where we can, the city is doing a lot of the work ourselves. But where we need help from the private sector experts, we've hired several contractors to help with concrete foundation repairs, flooring and concrete resurfacing, plumbing and mechanical design, installation of IT infrastructure, construction management, bathroom, showers, and laundry. And the photos that you see here are actually from this morning. This is a concrete pour from inside of one of the warehouses where they're reconfiguring that space to turn into that shower and new restroom for our residents. In addition to that, you'll see some before and afters here. On the left is the former cafeteria and the cotton viewing room that's being reconfigured by our staff as we speak to be a new kitchen area and training facilities. You see some of our staff there working on new electrical and HVAC upgrades. The eastern warehouse is shown on the left, and that was once full of a number of different materials and storage racks. We've been working to remove those materials and do the necessary foundational work to create those restrooms, mercy house offices, and dorm areas. That's another picture of the concrete pour that just happened this morning to facilitate that. The western warehouse is being reconfigured to be a new dayroom, a dorm area, and a possessions storage area. You'll see some of the concrete work that's going on there, some of the walls that are going up today. Again, a lot of these pictures are from just the last few weeks. And then in the office wing, there was probably the least amount of work that needed to be done here, mostly a fresh coat of paint, new flooring, and then the reconfiguring of a few spaces to provide for future exam rooms. In addition to that, we've really had to get into the details of the layout. I wouldn't say that we're quite decorating, but we're planning for people to actually live and use this space. So we've been working with our professional operator, Mercy House, to figure out which chairs go where, how many tables are needed, where desks are required, what kind of beds are best for this type of facility and more. Our finance team is working very closely with them to get all of those orders set and make sure that we have everything in place by our fall opening. In addition to that, our Public Works Department has been working on the neighborhood improvement plan. We do have a CIP project that was approved in your council's budget just last month that shows some additional off-site street improvements, including the installation of a signal at the intersection of Brundage Lane and Highway 58. Now, I'd like to take you on a little virtual tour of the site. Back in March, we planned to take you all out in person and walk you through the facility. Unfortunately, COVID-19 hit and kind of delayed those plans. And now it's a full construction site. So it wouldn't quite be ideal to walk through it in person today. So we had our IT staff go out and film some footage of the site so that we can show you what it looks like inside. So this is the view of the front of the facility looking from Brundage Lane forward. We'll be working to remove a couple of those trees, add some enhanced landscaping. And of course, we've painted the building, which you can't quite see here. And ultimately, we plan to add some new architectural features, as shown here. So for the tour, we're going to start on the west side of the building and begin at Brundage Lane and kind of drive you through at ground level so you can really see what it looks like. We'll walk through the facility and we'll see what it looks like through the eyes of someone who's entering for the first time. We'll walk through the coordinated entry area and then on into the dorm areas. So again, this is what the walk-up will look like. As you know, this is a referral-only facility. So our partners that are part of the approved referral network will bring new clients to the site. We'll work together with Flood, the city rapid response teams, BPD, KCSO, the other shelters, the hospitals, and others to bring new clients to our facility. We're creating a drive-up area here. And then, the clients will be able to walk up. We're installing a new path through the courtyard here. And the idea here, and I credit Nick for this idea, is to use this as our walk-up, is to create a welcoming, warm, calming space. Because again, we're hoping to bring people in off of the street that have had a period of instability in their life. The idea is to come to the new Brundage Lane Navigation Center and kind of get a fresh start, connect with services, and really start to stabilize your life. So upon the walk-up, you'll come into a coordinated entry space. And that's also going to be designed to be a very calming space where new clients will be checked in. They'll meet the Mercy House staff. They'll talk about the programming that they'll be committing to and what life will be like within the facility. From there, you would walk through the coordinated entry space and into what used to be that former cafeteria area in the pictures that were shown earlier. This will eventually be converted into office space for the Mercy House staff and the housing navigators and their team, and also the commercial kitchen and cafeteria where meals will be served. We'll be serving three warm meals a day that are nutritionally balanced. And you'll see a lot of the work that's happened here. As I mentioned, the previously existing tile flooring has been removed, and we're working to create that polished concrete throughout the entire facility. This is some of the work that's been doing, that's going on in the former east warehouse. This is where all of those racks were previously stored. The foundational work that you see there is, again, where we've pulled up several, we've made several alterations to the cement foundation in order to add the plumbing, electrical, and other things that'll be needed for the new shower space. Here's an image of what it looked like before. As you can see, quite a difference already. And by our opening this fall, you won't even recognize the space. So continuing on in our tour, we'll now continue to walk through over to the west warehouse. This space here will be part of kind of an entry area. You'll see several new walls have gone up, and we're creating a couple of spaces over here. Directly in front of us, at the very back, will be the possessions storage area where clients will be assigned to a storage tote where they can have long-term storage of the things that they bring with them to the facility. To the right will be the women's dormitory area where there will be beds and smaller totes for clients to keep their day-to-day items. And then here to the left is where the dayroom will be. There will be cuts made, windows and doors into those walls, and it will look out onto that courtyard area. This will be a dayroom where there'll be computers, Wi-Fi access, and an opportunity for clients to stay indoors when they're not attending jobs or when they're not working with their housing navigators, case managers, or getting other training. with their housing navigators, case managers or getting other training. So again, quite a transformation happening here. Now we'll go take a quick peek over into the commercial kitchen space, which is over on the east side of the building. Previously, this was another warehouse in that cotton viewing room that we saw earlier. It's being reconfigured now. This is what it looks like as of last week. We're doing work on the ceilings, replacing ceiling tiles, adding new electrical and really laying the foundation to install the commercial kitchen over the next several months. So now we'll take a quick look at the office space on the southern end of the facility. This is that corridor where all of our service providers will be. We've already entered into a contract with the Bakersfield-Kern Regional Homeless Collaborative, and they will have free office space here. This is what it looks like as of today. Not a lot of change from when we bought it before. As I mentioned, we simply are adding new paint, we'll be taking up that carpeting there and replacing it with vinyl plank flooring to allow, of course, for those sanitation items that I mentioned earlier. And each of these offices will be occupied by different service providers. Again, those will be the case managers, the housing navigators and other partners that we contract with. And then here on the right is what we're calling the medical corridor. Kern Behavioral Health and Kern Medical have both agreed to provide clinic services here for our residents and for our clients. So these offices are being reconfigured a bit more. The offices on the left will actually be turned into exam rooms. Nick and his team are working to install new flooring and sinks, and then there will also be other service rooms on the right. Now this is that boardroom. This is where the 60-member Calcot Board used to meet, so it's a pretty large boardroom. And we're reimagining this space to be a community room. So what'll be able to happen there is the community will be able to come in and use the space for community meetings. The Homeless Collaborative will be able to hold governing and executive board meetings there and more. So quite a bit going on at the facility. We're pretty proud of how far we've come so far. And just to quickly wrap up, can you help me, Julie? There we go. So the next steps, we're kind of in the last stage, we're about 90 days out from fall. So we're working full steam ahead, we're continuing with project management, we're continuing construction and preparation work related to the installation of fire alarms and sprinklers, the IT network, electrical, the flooring, the gas and the ventilation, that commercial kitchen, reconfiguring the dorms and the dayrooms, installing the exam rooms, et cetera. And then we're also coordinating and overseeing Mercy House with their deliverables, and they're working on executing those agreements with Kern Medical Center, Kern Behavioral Health and Kern Human Services. They're also starting to hire and train their new staff that'll staff the facility. They're working to procure the final supplies and materials, and then they're also developing their final operating plan, good neighbor policy and that referral network. So as you can see, we've come a long way in a very short time. Since January, we are full-blown construction mode right now, and everything is on track for our grand opening in the fall. And with that, I'm here and Nick's here, and I really want to give credit to our city staff for all of the hard work that they've been doing, particularly in light of COVID and all of those challenges. I'm very pleased to say that we remain on schedule, and that's due to the leadership team and all of their staff that are working hard to get this done. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kitchen. Thank you, Mr. Fidler, and your teams for a very comprehensive plan. What I am encouraged is that this is so much more than just a roof, because we know that our homeless persons need a bed, but they also need services to be able to move on in their journey. And the plan that you presented certainly takes that into account, so kudos to your efforts. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Kitchen, thank you for your presentation, and a big thank you for your management of this project. I know it has been one of the biggest staples of your daily routine, but I appreciate all of your effort and your time. And similarly, I'd like to thank Mr. Fidler for your management of this as well, and all the work of city staff. I mean, it's been incredible. I had an opportunity to visit the site just a few weeks ago and was impressed to see all the progress. And so thank you so much for working diligently to get this facility open in the fall. That is the goal. And so I keep sending emails to Ms. Kitchen to make sure that we're still on track, and I appreciate you being patient with me on that. But I'm eager to see the opening here. I did just want to make a couple of comments. One is, I really think that this location is perfect, and I think, given the space and couple that with the operator Mercy House and the reputation that they bring to the community, I think that this site, this Brundage Lane Navigation Center really has the potential to be a model for the country. And that's something to be excited about. I think that we are really going to be able to help people who are experiencing homelessness on the streets and get them into housing, permanent housing, through services, as the mayor pointed out, but also through that emergency shelter that they desperately need. And so this is going to be emblematic, I think, of the heart of our community, and I'm really thrilled to see that happen. As we get closer to opening date, and perhaps I am jumping the gun a little bit, but I'm not sure if we're going to have another opportunity to speak about this, I'd like to make a request that we reach out to the various school districts in our community and specifically those directors of student support services and coordinators of the McKinney-Vento programs, and invite them to take a private tour of the facility and let them see the vision. Let them see firsthand what we're planning to do and how we can work collaboratively together. They are on the front lines helping many families in our community. Similarly, I'd like to ask that we work with case managers and social workers of our various hospitals so they, again, can see firsthand what services and resources are provided at the Brundage Lane Center, and so that they can refer folks over. I mean, this will be, they are on the front lines, working with homeless individuals, and I think they will benefit from seeing that vision and seeing it firsthand. And then finally, and again, this may be a bit premature, but I would like to continue a conversation about, you know, the operations and the referral side. My hope is that we have a plan to accept people during the evenings or after-hours and also during the weekends, when oftentimes there's gaps in services available for individuals who are experiencing homelessness and often in crisis situations where they desperately need a shelter space, and they can't wait till Monday morning at 9:00 AM. So I'm hoping that we can work through that plan, and that remains a priority. But again, thank you so much for all the work.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. And I want to reiterate that last point that Councilmember Gonzalez made in terms of the hours. So oftentimes, we hear from hospitals that when they're trying to discharge, it's just so difficult because of the hours in which the person needs to leave. So some kind of provision there would be very, very beneficial.
Absolutely, Mayor and Councilmember Gonzalez. The referral network is a key component of this process, and several members of the city staff are involved with the Bakersfield-Kern Regional Homeless Collaborative, and we had a meeting earlier this week where we brought this very topic up. The city's shelter and Mercy House will, as phase one, we will be implementing that referral network. And we've encouraged and asked the other service providers and other shelter operators to join us in being a part of that referral network so that we can create a truly comprehensive 24/7 kind of process that doesn't leave anybody out in the cold or behind.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, then Councilmember Smith.
Thanks, Mayor. Staff have been doing a great job, and I just want to thank you, Jackie and Nick, for all your hard work and you spearheading this project along with Nick. Today, when I was watching the news, I saw a couple of stories. One was on HVAC systems, and it may or may not filter out the virus. And the second one was on UV lighting, and I know we're still in the construction phase, and maybe do a little research on that, since, you know, people in close proximity can be a harbinger of disease, and this facility with people coming off the street, you know, could bring that illness with them. So if there's an opportunity to incorporate something like that, I think that could potentially help the facility. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Parlier. We are actually working with a contractor on that exact thing. We're moving forward with the HVAC system as planned, but there are opportunities to upgrade that system, and these are potentially cares reimbursable expenses in light of the COVID pandemic, so we're working on opportunities to pursue that.
Wonderful. I'll make a motion, receive and file, too.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to add that I appreciate staff's work on this, and what a great facility. I had not had the opportunity to walk through it, but I think it's another example of the city of Bakersfield buying existing buildings and, you know, really coming out with something first-class. I think the, you know, City Hall North is an example of the building planning departments. There's also a purchase of an existing building, and I think it's a good use of taxpayer funds, and we come out with something very nice. The landscaping, the mature trees, you know, I agree with Nick's idea, you know, makes a great entry and a very warm feeling. So yeah, I look forward to Bakersfield being on the cutting edge of working towards solving this problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Colleagues, anyone else for comments? Seeing no other requests, city clerk, would you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Parlier?
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera? Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Weir?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith? Councilmember Freeman?
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Here. Aye.
Motion is approved, with Councilmember Rivera absent.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Kitchen. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Parks update.
Mr. Clerk, would you like to offer some comments?
I would just state that this is a follow-up from some previous conversations of the city council in interest to parks, particularly around the budget area, and turn it over to Ms. Hoover.
Thank you. Mayor Go, Vice Mayor Parlier, City Council, it's a pleasure to be here. I'm Diane Hoover, Director of Recreation and Parks. Probably knew that already. And as Christian said, that during the budget presentations, there were several questions and unanswered issues that came up regarding parks. So what I would like to do is outline some of the projects that we have done per ward in the last 10 years, and just as a reminder of some of the many projects that are out there with parks. And then the Assistant Director, Darren Budak, will follow up with current staffing and what is happening now. So we'll go from the past to the present. Is it not going forward? So the council wards are, we have seven, and in several areas of development occur currently in wards four, five and near six in here. And in the older parts of town, in wards one and two, we have several parks that are constantly needing upgraded because they are older. In Ward three, we have several projects that are new, and also some in these areas that are older as well. And in Ward seven, it's kind of in between the old and the new, so you'll see some of the projects there as well, and some of the funding sources. So the different funding sources you will see in the charts include, of course, the capital outlay, the facility reserve, the park improvement, the public safety and vital services, PSVS, and also CDBG. CDBG is from HUD Funding, federal program, and it is for low-income or economic, low level, and that can be in Ward one and two primarily, but also in some of the other wards as well. And then the Land and Water Conservation Fund grant has been identified previously. And Prop 68 is a state grant that is very specific for projects but can be used in various areas as well. And then we have some other funding sources that are one-time funding sources that will be identified throughout. What we opened in 2020 were two new parks in Ward five, Bell Court and Bridle Creek. Bridle Creek, we have not yet been able to have an official ribbon cutting due to COVID, but hopefully soon in this fall, we'll be able to do that. We also, in 2020, completed the Stern Park ADA improvements, the Lowell Park shade structure, and a brand-new exercise equipment at Kaiser Permanency Sports Village that, again, has not yet been open yet. And the projects in all wards in the past five years have included improving the safety surface on playgrounds, and that was with park improvement funds as well as the capital outlay funds. And then PSVS helped us last year with the replacement of trees and shrubs throughout the city. You can see a before and an after, and as that plant material is growing, it fills in all those areas. So starting with Ward one, we have several projects that were completed in the last 10 years, and as I mentioned, you can see the different funding sources that are identified here. Several projects at the MLK Center, as well as some of the parks like Plants and Lowell Park as well. And this last year, we completed the Lowell Park picnic shade structure. And in Ward two, there are several projects listed. In Ward two, I won't go over each one of them, but you can see the, again, the different funding sources that are identified and the different types of projects that are here. McMertry Aquatic Center is one that received several different projects over time, Jefferson, Beal Beach, and of course, Mill Creek Linear Project. And one of the major projects, too, was the Q Street improvements. You can see the before Q Street, and it was mentioned in a previous presentation about Q Street, and then the new improvements here that we maintain on a regular basis. And then this one was Jefferson. A year and a half ago, we completed the renovation of the basketball, and there were tennis courts there, too, but the tennis courts weren't being used, so we converted them into the basketball courts, all basketball. Unfortunately, basketball right now is not able to be played, so we have to keep the hoops down for now. And then in Ward three, we have a few projects there as well, the City in the Hills and the Kern River Upland. That was a Prop 50 grant that we received from the California Resources Grant. It is now called Prop 68. And City in the Hills improvements there with the playground and the landscaping and City in the Hills. And in Ward four, Ward four is an interesting ward that we maintain 60 parks throughout the city, but in Ward four, most of the parks are in NOR area. But in Ward four, we do have the Park at Riverwalk, and we do have Bill Park Greens Park as well. And Bill Park Greens was renovated just a couple of years ago, the old playground. As playgrounds age, the typical age of a playground is around 12 to 15 years. Since we have 60 locations of playgrounds, it is hard to get back to them in that amount of time. So several of our playgrounds are over 20 years old. And when they become that old, you cannot, you can't find replacements for the slides, and some of the features that are older and the manufacturer doesn't produce them anymore. So they have to be specifically manufactured, and it takes time, and it takes more cost than what you would normally expect. So these are some of the new play features that we have updated now. are some of the new play features that we have updated now. And in Ward five, there's a lot of new development going on in Ward five, and so there's many park improvement projects that can happen there due to the new construction. And again, a new playground at Garden Park, the old features were of the wooden nature that no longer really had any play value to the children, and updated with all the new features, and even, they create now some musical instruments that are out there now. And in Ward six, we had a few projects there with, again, upgrading playgrounds, and the Silver Creek Pool Deck ran out of, it was cutting people's feet, and you couldn't really walk on it anymore, and so we redid the pool deck just last year. And in Ward seven, we have a few parks there that also receive new playgrounds with different funding sources, a few of the playgrounds and parks do qualify for CDBG, but most of them are capital outlay or park improvement. And we finished the Stern Park shade structure just recently. And then in addition, we have the two major sports parks, we do have Mace Marin, and over a period of time, several projects have happened out there in the phases, and we do need, we do recognize the need to phase these projects, the whole tennis court, pickleball court and basketball court were finished just recently, we have not been able to dedicate them or open them yet, pickleball we did open, but not the basketball. And the Spray Park that was completed last year is now open. The overall plan is we have the four ballfields right there, and in the next phase will be the new four ballfields, we have completed the dog park and the Spray Park playground that's here, as well as a picnic area, and the new courts are right in this area of the park. And as more and more development occurs, there will be large tournaments, many, many events out there, and we're very excited that this is on 178 and Highway 184 as well. And the other large sports park is in Kaiser Permanente Sports Village, and we get several funding sources for Kaiser Permanente Sports Village, and the master plan is huge, we have these, these phases are completed, all of the soccer fields, and this currently is being used for youth football, and then this area is also complete off Taft Highway with the children's play area, the new exercise equipment, parking, and walking and shade structures all around here. The next phase is for the youth football complex, and that includes this area here and the parking there. The stadium field was completed just last year, and the youth football, we're able to use that last fall. And as we build out more and more phases, this will be a destination park for statewide, region-wide, even nationwide tournaments and events at this location. And as I mentioned before, the good part about this is that it's just south of the water treatment plant, and we're able to use this water to irrigate all of the fields that are in this park. So, total costs in the last 10 years, you can see a significant amount, $66 million, but again, those are phases and throughout the whole city of Bakersfield. And I'd like to now turn it over to Darren Budak, who will talk about the park maintenance.
Thank you, Councilmembers, Madam Mayor, I'll take a couple of minutes here just to walk through our operations side of the Recreation and Parks Department, and maybe answer some questions here at the end, so, as you can see, we are divided up into six areas across the city, similar to our ward boundaries, but as they've changed, as the city's grown, we've had to implement some new areas, as a matter of fact, our department continues to grow just about on a weekly basis with the development and stuff, we continue to take on new streetscapes and new areas across the city on a routine basis, so we're constantly reevaluating, stretching staffing, and trying to find creative ways to get things done. So, one thing I would like to point out here on the Parks Division, and I was just looking into this in preparation for this, I did notice in talking to our supervisors, which is an amazing group of guys, you know, I put their names up there on purpose because I think they deserve some recognition, we average over 19 years' experience for each and every supervisor, so, you know, that says a lot for the city and, you know, the dedication they have, and the commitment they have to this profession, and our department in particular. I have up there the various number of positions within the areas, and what I can do now is I will get into the little bit of the breakup and the uniqueness of each and every area. As you can see, most areas have all streetscapes and parks, but one unique thing about the Area One, which is located up in northwest Bakersfield, is, as Diane mentioned earlier, we do not have any parks maintained by that area, that is 100% streetscapes, and when I say streetscapes, I don't think a lot of people truly understand, our department maintains several hundreds of miles of streetscapes every single day, and for instance, on major street, you think of it as one streetscape, but we have streetscaping on the east side, west side, and the median, so technically, every mile, we have three miles of maintenance within that area, so it takes a lot of time and effort, so, but these are some of the unique things about each area. Area Two, northeast Bakersfield, we have 15 parks up there, including Mace Marin, it comes all the way downtown, Sister City Gardens, the Chester, Medians, California, and it has a broad breadth of, you know, maintenance needs from our new parks such as the sports complex, all the way down to some of the challenges with some of our older parks, and working with Councilman Gonzalez at Jefferson, and some of the ongoing challenges we have with the homeless at that park, and then a couple of others, but staff do a great job of getting in there every single day to deal with these challenges. Moving on to Area Three, southeast Bakersfield, 11 parks, stretches all the way from Beach Park right down here in downtown, all the way down to southeast, one of the unique opportunities we do have is the Saunders Recreational Facility, not sure if everybody's aware of that, but that is a covered rink facility that we are, we were able to use for indoor soccer, we have lacrosse in there, we have inline skating, so it's a unique facility that was built approximately nine years ago, that gets a lot of use by the community. And also, one unique thing, we do have two skate parks that we're responsible for in the city of Bakersfield, and they both fall within Area Three, so. Area Four, what we call is South Central, has 16 parks, it's very heavy in parks, takes a lot of staff to get out there and maintain them on a regular basis, and it does include the Kaiser Permanente Sports Village, which originally, when Phase One and Two were built, they were through partnerships with AYSO and Golden Empire Youth Football, they were taking on a majority of the maintenance out there, we had some work out in the streetscapes and in the parking lots, but now, as the park has evolved, and we've got into the passive park side of it, we now have playgrounds out there, picnic shelters, public restrooms and stuff, we now have to dedicate full-time city staff out there on a daily basis to keep up with that park, because it's very popular, especially with the walkers and the people in the south part of town. Moving on to Area Five, we have 12 parks in that area, including some like Hagen Oaks, Greystone, Seven Oaks, I can tell you, our Greystone Park, Spray Park is one of, it competes right up there with Jastro for the most heavily-used spray park, we get a regular attendance down there at 1 o'clock, they are standing there, ready to go, to push the button to get that spray park going, especially, you know, I think we're in heat wave number three or four this year, so it's definitely an amenity that helps the citizens. And then last but not least is our new area, we created it approximately three years ago to keep up with some of the demand of the growth and stuff, it has seven parks out in it, and it has the Park at River Walk, which is a big demand on our time, we dedicate two full-time staff out there, and then one of our biggest amenities in the city of Bakersfield that people talk about all the time is the multi-use trail that goes from Enos Lane all the way, well, we're responsible from Enos Lane all the way out to the Bluffs, so, and that's everything from the weed control to the trash to the various resting areas, so, takes a lot of time and a lot of staff to maintain those areas. So... All right, so, I talk a lot about areas and what they're made up of, and you saw the staffing, what I wanted to do here is basically give it just an average per area what we would consider assignments, we have averaged 13 assignments within an area, they include what we call as a maintenance assignment, which carries two full-time employees, and these are the staff that are out there on a daily basis, these are the ones cleaning the restrooms, picking up the trash, emptying trash cans, doing all irrigation work, and trimming, maintaining, and doing that, those are guys and gals that you see every single day up and down, and then what we get into is we have a park mow crew, and each area has one mow crew, and they use the big mowers, they're called WHAM, a wide-area mower, and they go out and they mow on average about 10 parks, mow, edge, and clean 10 parks per week, and that's a daunting task to get out there and mow that many, because that averages about 85 acres of turf that each crew is mowing on a weekly basis now. Moving into street mow crews, they're the ones that are our streetscapes, the smaller mowers, you'll see sometimes we have push mowers, we have the small riding mowers, staff are out there maintaining approximately six acres of turf per assignment, we'll carry two street crews on average in an area, and then one of our probably most important operations, and the one we get the calls the most about is our spray rig operator. Unfortunately, we only have one full-time employee with a spray rig in each area throughout the city, and they are responsible for all the pre- and post-emergent herbicides in both parks, streetscapes and stuff, so, and as we know, and as you can see, their demand is ever-present in trying to control some of the weeds and issues that we're having this year in particular. And then last but not least, our craft worker, which is a skilled position that does a lot of our construction work in our facilities, our, you know, everything from the plumbing to the major irrigation work and carpentry work, so. And then, as everybody said in presentations before this, we wanted to talk about, so what's the COVID impact been to the Parks Division? In February, everybody was happy, everybody was ready to go, I had our budgets in place, and as a matter of fact, our first year ever, we had all of our temp staff lined up, we were ready to go, when I talk about temp staff, we bring on 30 temp employees every single year to help with our spring and summer, because it's our peak season, there's a lot of edging, a lot of mowing, a lot of additional work that we don't do in the winter, that we bring on the part-time staff, so we were ready to go, and then, as everybody knows, COVID-19 hit. So as this graph shows here, just a depiction of sort of how things evolved, and then how we look today, so back in 2009, 10, each full-time frontline staff was averaging about 10 and a half acres each and every day they were responsible for. Now, that could be one big park and a couple streetscapes, it could be 10, 12 streetscapes, you know, but on average, they had about 10 and a half acres. As time, and you know, as we've got through the Great Recession and various other growth and challenges within our division, it's evolved to, as budgeted this year, we're sitting at about 13.36 acres per employee. Now, through the years, we have, you know, evolved in some of our practices and, you know, using, working with better equipment, and just being more efficient overall to accommodate those numbers and then keep our standard up. So, what do we look like today? So I just ran these numbers today, and that graph on the right, you can see, it's a huge jump, what that depicts is, the 13.6 is our budgeted, is we were fully staffed per budget, the graph on the right shows how we look this morning at 6 o'clock, so, this morning, we, between industrial leave and then our seven frozen positions, okay, move along, our seven frozen positions, we are down over 23 full-time employees, because of the COVID impact and then the frozen positions, so that's put a huge push on our staff to get out there and get things done, so, it is a challenge, we're currently working on that, we're looking, as I said, we're looking at best practices and trying to get things wrapped up, especially in our weed control, we're going to talk to some of the other communities around, and hopefully bring back some ideas here at midterm or at mid-year to talk about, you know, what we can do, so, and I've always been told to always end on a positive note, so I will end on our rapid-response team for the Recreation and Parks Department has been a smashing success, as you can see with the numbers that are up there, the one that really pops out to me is, they have removed year-to-date over 192 tons of trash and garbage from our facilities, so, and trying to save time and move along, I'll end it there.
Karen? Thank you, Mr. Budak, thank you, Ms. Hoover, before we go to council comments, we have a request for a public speaker, so, Madam Clerk, would you please call the first public speaker?
Eddie Lane. I had a question for Diane Hoover.
Thank you for this opportunity, I'm Eddie Lane, I'm speaking on behalf of the Sierra Club, we provided the council with copies of a letter, and so hopefully you've had that and had a chance to review it a little bit, I'd like to maybe highlight two or three aspects of that letter, one, we have requested that there be a spreadsheet, an analysis of the needs of each park, including deferred maintenance, you know, I think all of us who live in the city are just delighted that we have such a wonderful network of parks, there are problems, we've talked about that, Uplands of the Kern, there's some issues with Martin Luther King Park, but this is a wonderful park system we have in the city of Bakersfield, but if I remember right, during one of the hearings, Councilman Smith asked that deferred maintenance needs be analyzed, so we need to have, we need to have some kind of analysis to know where we're going from in the future, some kind of spreadsheet per park about what the deferred needs are. I understood that there was going, there is going to be an update of the park's plan, the park's plan was finished in 2007, and it expired, for lack of a better term, in 2015, so we've been operating without a park's plan for five years, and there was no, and one of the key pieces in the park's plan was all kinds of survey work and community involvement, all kinds of stakeholder involvement, well, that did not happen after the passage of Measure N, and it certainly needs to happen now before we move forward, so that's one of our points that we made again and again and again, to involve the community on a ward-by-ward basis. to involve the community on a ward-by-ward basis. And one more thing, we need to, we need to separate out all of the millions that have been spent here and take out the Measure N piece and deal with that. Because Measure N is not like all those grants. Measure N is tax money from each person who's spending sales tax in this community. Largely, in terms of, in terms of a percentage of their income, largely the middle income and low income people in, in the city are being hit more by Measure N. And yet what happened? 80, 85% of their money in parks went to those two developments, Kaiser Permanente and Mesa Marin. We're asking that there be an equitable, a fair distribution of those monies in the future. So that the people who voted for those monies and are paying those monies, that the parks in those areas be, be, receive a fair treatment. So those are our basic points. I could, I've been here before. I appreciate this opportunity. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Lane. Mr. Clegg, would you like to address anything?
Honorable Mayor and members of the city council, I just wanted to reflect again in closing and summary that we worked fairly in-depth through the budget workshops to talk about what some of our future needs are. And I would offer up that our GEN Info memo that is public information from June 19th included a list of all of the deferred and anticipated maintenance needed in our parks in coming years. And so we think that's a great baseline. We wanted to bookend that with just some reflection on what we have done in certain parks over the last 10 years that gives, paints us a picture of what's done. We do have that list of what needs to be done in, in coming years. I would remind council that that was about an $8 million total for parks deferred maintenance projects. And that's something that I think we can get at over the next two years through our Public Safety and Vital Services funding. Of course, that needs to go through each annual budgeting process and to the Oversight Committee. But I think we can get at that $8 million over the next two years. And then I also just wanted to reflect a little bit of the details of the maintenance side to also paint that picture of the work that we do on a daily and weekly basis related to parks. So I think this fills out our awareness of what are things that have been done, things that need to be done and what we're doing today. And look forward to doing parks planning through our general plan amendment process. We anticipate having a lot of input and feedback as to what park and open spaces should look like in each area of the city. And so we'll be doing some of that long-range planning. But I think we have a good plan for the next two years to get at some of those deferred issues in parks.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg. We have some requests to speak from Councilmember Sullivan, then Councilmember Smith and Councilmember Gonzalez. Councilmember Sullivan.
Thank you. Diane, several years ago, maybe it's, it would be interesting to know how many years ago. Regarding the landscaping, we decided to experiment with artificial turf in, in the medians. And I believe there were some collectors being constructed out on the west side of town. And just interested, it seemed like, seems like that would be just a very good plan, especially for the medians. How, how did that work out?
Councilmember Sullivan, in many areas, it works out really great, especially when the median is so narrow. The artificial turf, we don't need to water it or anything. It's just really narrow there. Other types of landscaping that we've been able to do for the streetscape is have the, the brick border and then just one line of trees and plants, which works out really well too. Keeps the water off the street as well. So yes, when, when we do have an occasion to build new or to remodel old, we're able to do that. We did that on Truxton, Median. We used the artificial turf. And right outside of City Hall, we have artificial turf, which helps.
Yeah, great, great. And also safety, you know, regarding the, getting the equipment in, into the median. So anyway, that's, that's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sullivan. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just really appreciate parks and bypass. And I, they are a great community asset. They greatly increase the quality of life in the community. And we've really seen that during COVID, our, our parks, people are out there walking, getting outside and doing what they can to stay healthy. I, I do believe they help drive economic development. And it is very important to keep them up and that was a main motivator, a main motivator for me for the PSVS. And I appreciate Mr. Clegg's comments that, you know, we hope in the next two years, we can get to all that deferred maintenance. That would be great to take care of all those local parks. I do have, I talked about the spray truck and bypass, goat head time and a lot of flat tires and, you know, a big pain for people. So if we can take care of that sooner rather than later, it would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Hoover, Mr. Budak, for your presentation today. And a big thank you to your staff for the hard work that they do day in and day out. I have an opportunity to interact with them on a regular basis and I certainly appreciate all the responses that they provide for, for at least Ward 2 and for the rest of the city, really. You know, I know that, that staff works hard and they're trying to respond to many of their requests. But we know that the demands for services and for responses to issues related to homelessness and other issues are great. And so I would just encourage us to, to continue to have a conversation about capacity and what else that we need to do to provide more support so that we can stay on these issues and really provide high-quality park services for, for all residents throughout, throughout the day. So from morning, noon and night. And I hope that we can continue that and continue that conversation. Mr. Lane, I appreciate your comments today. I just ask if Mr. Clegg can reach out to Mr. Lane and provide him that list that was included in the, in GEN Info so that he, he and the Sierra Club can take a look at what is actually in that deferred maintenance plan and in some of the work that we're planning to do, hopefully in the next year. I mean, there's so many things that we can just knock out and hopefully we can be, be really aggressive when we have that opportunity. And then finally, I'm excited to look about, look at, you know, the general plan and look at, you know, what is our vision for parks in the future. I think we need to get a real sense of what is our goal in terms of park acreage per thousand people. You know, we look at parts of my ward and older parts of the city where we're really lacking in green space. And it is an equity issue. You know, many of our families that I, I represent are in disadvantaged neighborhoods. And they don't have the same opportunities as other, other families might have for recreational opportunities. And I think we need to, to really plan for a serious investment in, in new parks in some of our disadvantaged areas. Homeacre Place, the 34th Street corridor comes to mind. I mean, this neighborhood has, has, has been discussing the idea of some sort of recreation center or park or green space or pocket park for that neighborhood. Certainly a disadvantaged area. And so I know, Ms. Hoover, you and I have talked about this over the years. And former city manager Tandy and I have, had, had worked on at least a cursory plan to, to, to look at that area in terms of building, building a new park. So I hope that work can continue and I hope that we can look at other neighborhoods as well in terms of a real serious investment over the next five, 10 years in terms of new parks for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. Vice Mayor.
Diane, I'd like to thank you regarding Stern Park. That was a real important upgrade for the Greenfield Walking Group. And the new park play structure looks wonderful along with the, the parking lot. That was a big request too because it was pretty deteriorated. So I just want to thank you for that. And motion received and filed.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Don't see any other requests for comments. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Parlier.
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Weir.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman.
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Aye.
Motion is approved with Councilmember Rivera absent.
Thank you very much. So that is the last item on our agenda. So we stand adjourned at 5:11.